I'm ready for this Omicron booster. That way we can wait for the next variant.
Well, I'm happy to report on my mobile clinic on Tuesday. We gave out several vaccines. People were very receptive to it. We were able to hand out a lot of information. This coming Tuesday will be at 82 Food Mart.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, if you want to check next week, you better get moving.
No pressure, officer, no pressure, man.
Paydays, payday's Tuesday. For everybody else.
With the exception of.
Yeah. Hopefully no one. I think both of our newspapers have got to where they just.
They watch it on.
They watch it on the screen. They don't count. Okay, so we're ready? They won't join until six o'clock for a regular meeting where you've got a tax hearing right now. So I guess Ms. Donna go ahead and call the tax hearing to order and call it adjourned. Not adjourned, but let's call it an order. We've got until six o'clock.
Okay, I'd like to call this special board meeting on August 26, 2022 at 5:30. Located in the Estill County Board of Education Boardroom as well as being held via teleconference. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Saylor, first on our list, we have our public hearing.
Yeah. Thank you, Donna, and glad you're able to join us and that you're feeling better. And I know that Ms. Tammy Hardy had an emergency with her daughter breaking her hand today. So she, I did send her to Lincoln. She said if she got the chance, she would join us. So we hope that she's doing well also. So good to see everybody on a Friday night. This might be a first and maybe the last for me to have a Friday night board meeting, but that's okay. And so let's get started with our public tax hearing. I do want to just give a little bit of information to everybody. We'll put it out there for the general public. So they'll know exactly what we're doing. And of course, it will be on YouTube for anybody that wants to go back. We also have Mr. Bobby Short with us here for the tax hearing as well tonight. If he's got any comments here in a little bit, we'll be glad to hear from him. Let me start out by saying that the notice for this meeting has been advertised for the last two weeks in the largest newspaper in Estill County. And we have from the date of the last advertisement, we have 10 days. That's one reason why the meeting is a little bit of a strange time. But we're trying to meet the KRS statutes in terms of conducting business. It has been that KDE has now said that you really don't have to meet these requirements any longer. But I consulted with our board attorney and our board attorney says he really doesn't see where the statute has changed. And he questioned whether or not it had changed and we could have this meeting without all the advertisements. And he said, in order to make sure what you don't want to have happen is somebody come back later on and you have to go back, pay back taxes and do all those things. So I just felt like from our standpoint, under the advice of our attorney, we'll go ahead and have our public hearing tonight. What we have proposed in the Estill County School District is our current tax rate is 51.3 cents. It has been 51.3 cents for the past three years, if I'm not mistaken. And of course, I think our high tax rate was somewhere around, I believe it was 52.6 after the passage of the nickel. And I may be off a tenth or two there. But at one time we were 52 points something. The last three years, we've been 51.33.
I know back in the spring when we did the budget, the tentative budget, which was in May, we had made the statement at that time that we were going to keep the tax rate as is at 51.3 cents. Well, after speaking with Jeff Hicks, our property administrator, valuation administrator here in Estill County, the value of property, the total value of property in Estill County actually went up about $30 million. So in order for us to take in the 51.3 cents tax rate that we had talked about, we would have had to advertise or could have been a 45-day recall period. And really, there was no sense in taking the 51.3 cent tax rate after we realized that we could take what is legally allowed by law, the board could still get additional revenue and the people of Estill County would get a tax cut. So instead of a 51.3 cent rate, we've advertised that the board is looking to set the tax rate tonight at 49.7 cents. That is a 1.6% decrease. That's a $16 decrease for a $100,000 property is what that would matter. So any property valued at $100,000, every $100,000 would be a $16 discount compared to what they had to pay last year. I think the, the good point here is, is that if you think about it, the high tax rate was 52.6, something along that rate. And now over the last four years or so, five years now, look at all of the construction that we've been able to do as a district, you know, with the recallable nickel. And now at the end of five years, basically, we're now lowering the tax rate and it's been lowered about two and a half cents. So the $50 that everybody had to pay for the recallable nickel, now we've reduced that almost $25. So it's almost like you've got all the construction projects that we've done. And basically you've got them at half the rate now. We've already reduced the tax rate back to half of what it was originally. So it's good news for the taxpayers of Estill County. It's also good news for the board because you can take the 4% tax increase, the board is going to get an additional $300,000, which of course with inflation, with the rise in diesel fuel and with the construction projects that's still ongoing, also with the 3% raise that we gave employees and the $1 per hour for all classified employees, that is needed revenue for the board as well. So it's really a win-win situation. The board gets additional revenue. The taxpayers get another tax cut from what was our previous tax rates over the last four or five years. And as I said, it's a win-win situation for everybody. So that's pretty much a quick overview of where tax rates were, where they were this past year, where they're going to be this coming year. And if you all have any questions, we discussed this at the last meeting. Or if we have any public comment, we're ready for that at this time. So I don't know if the board has any questions.
I don't have no questions. Now that we've got good news and from the taxpaying viewpoint, y'all done a great job. We're being lower than taxes for the whole county. And I think it's sad that some of the county can't beat us. I'd love to see what y'all do. And that's the reason I'm here and the only reason.
Well, we appreciate.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming and, you know, I think it is a testament to this board. I mean, there had to be a tough decision made several years ago in order for us to be able to have the facility improvements that we've had. But now to see the tax rate coming back down and you still have all of these improved facilities. By the time we get to this coming June, we've done $46 million worth of construction. So we have done life-changing projects for our community and for our kids for years and years to come. And now the tax rate's starting to fall based on growth within our county. So I think that, as I said earlier, that's a win-win. We appreciate you being here, Bobby, and saying those words.
And we was at the football field the other night and I turned to their school. And it's amazing what it looks like versus several years back. It's well, it's well worth it, the nickel tax. I wasn't a big advocate of nickel tax. I'm not a big advocate of any tax. But I tell you, when you, when you can show these changes, it changes everybody's philosophy about. You gotta raise that. You gotta do it to give to the receiving. That's what I say.
It's for our children.
That's right.
And their future, in our future.
Well, and that's the great thing about it. The, the community gave. And now as the board and, you know, as the board makes these decisions, now the board is able to start pulling back on some of that. And again, still being able to get increased revenue because as I've been, if you've been, you know, dealing with anything with our board and you've been listening, it's been the fact that we have seen that I'm really concerned about next school year. I'm concerned about some of the COVID restrictions that's been lifted in terms of the attendance and how schools will be funded. And I'm really concerned about that. We've already started seeing a slight uptick with COVID cases in our school district. Usually right now, probably our schools, we would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of about 98% attendance on day seven and eight. We're sitting here at about 91, 90 and 91. And you think, well, that's not a big deal. Well, yeah, that is a big deal. That's huge dollars for the school district. But, you know, and some people always say, well, they're only about the money. They're only about the money. Well, you gotta have money to run the school system. We have to have money to provide services for our kids. So when we lose revenue, we have to cut services. We have to cut teachers. We have to cut bus services. We're not able to buy new buses. We have to pull back on maintenance items and those types of things. We can't give employees raises. So it really does impact that quite a bit. So we're already starting to see that COVID is having a big impact on our attendance numbers. But yet our attendance is going to be in our funding is going to be based on this year's attendance. We no longer can use 2018, 2019 data. Now that may change in the spring. Hopefully our legislature will see that we've made good faith efforts to get kids back in school and doing the right thing. Hopefully they will see that and they'll step up to the plate and do the right thing. But if they don't, then we've got to figure out how we raise additional revenue. This is good news for us that we can get additional revenue while still cutting taxes.
Is Roman up this year versus last year?
We are at pre-pandemic levels. Yes, our enrollment is up. We've had a lot of homeschool students come back to school because of all the mask mandates and all the different things. So I think that we were going to discuss that a little later in the board meeting. But based on the figures that Mr. Norton had given me, and I think you guys have it as well. He had an updated list and. I had it right here somewhere and I see it. Right there it is. And we're right now at 2217 and last year we were at 2121. So as you can see, we're up almost 100 students from this time last year.
Which is huge. And I believe the number pre-pandemic was 2120, or I'm sorry, 2226. So we're only, we're less than 10 students away from our pre-pandemic levels. And we've had kids enroll this week and we'll continue to have kids enroll over the next little few days. Yeah, usually after Labor Day. Yeah, there's a lot of parents that will hold their kids out until after Labor Day. So really good news on that front in terms of attendance, enrollment. Good news with the tax rates for everybody all the way around. And we've had a productive eight days. Hopefully we can continue here. Maybe we get in this coming week. We can take a little break here for Labor Day weekend. Everybody, you know, recharge and get ready to come back and see how it is. And I do have COVID numbers to share with y'all a little bit later in the board meeting. I see Mr. Peter has joined us for part of the public hearing. He's here for the board meeting.
I'm here. Good to see everyone.
Mr. Saylor, I just had a comment. Bobby Short is one of our community partners. And he, without people like him, it makes our job a lot more difficult. And so our community partners are just invaluable in everything that we try to do for our kids in our district. And I just wanted to say how much we appreciate Bobby and appreciate our other partners throughout the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. I only come to some of these meetings. I kind of stay behind eight ball with y'all a little bit. As I've seen, I've seen this same problem, you know, where I come from, Mullenburg County, no, that's where I'm from. And they, I personally led school board by ruining that county because they kept raising the taxes because they like spending money. And when the coal business left, that's the reason I ended up up here is, you know, y'all want to waver it quickly. And I hate to see, you know, this is a great community. I thought I'd been here as long as I have, but it's good. It's very good. And I, and I take pride in it. And I, and I hope it continues even after I'm gone. But I hope I got plenty of years left. I hope we keep that tax rate low. And we keep people coming in. That means. When, when I ask about them numbers, that tells me a lot about the community. It's very important.
Well, I had my pastor asked what was our total enrollment? And I told him, he said, where did all the people come from?
I'll say as a mail carrier, every day on any of our routes, we are adding one or two new addresses a week, a month. I mean, there's people coming in from California, Florida, Washington, all Tarlo community. And it's right the opposite where I, where I come from. It's going down. Not by one or two, by hundreds. And it's discouraging.
Well, we're uniquely positioned from the standpoint that this school district didn't depend a lot on coal severance money. Because as you get further in eastern Kentucky, as coal severance money has declined, you have seen tax rates go out the roof. I think in my former school district, the tax rate's like 70 something cents. You know, and that's, that's what you're seeing because when they lost their coal severance money, their tax rate went up. And then you've got like Mullenburg County, one of the big things that's hurt them out there is TVA. TVA's pulled out. That was a lot of their tax dollars as well. It's hurt them. But we, we've been in a place where we weren't dependent upon something like that. So we really, and that's one thing, you know, we've tried to do over the last seven years is we've tried to pay our own way. You know, if, if you'll give me what I need, let's run the school district on what we've got. And, you know, try to fit within that. And we, we've had to make a lot of decisions on a lot of cuts. But, and it'd be nice to just, if you want to just hand it out. But, you know, you can't be physically conservative and take care of your business by just handing out money that you don't have. And you just can't keep going back to the well when you've got a, you know, we're not an affluent community. We're rural. And, you know, we've got a lot of older people and you just can't continue to tax, 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 tax. So I appreciate the fact that six years ago, they did step up to the plate and they supported, they supported the nickel tax. And now they're seeing the benefits of it. And now it's good for us to be able to start pulling back. That was Mark Rollins. He's trying to get in. I'll have to. Well, no, he's here physically. So let me tell him to come to the back door. Anybody else have any comments? Well, I tell you, we've got about three minutes here. If there's nothing else, any other comments of Ms. Esprit, you can go ahead and adjourn the public hearing and then we'll start the board meeting here in about two minutes. You're muted, Ms. Esprit.
Sorry. I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I made the motion.
Sheila made the motion.
I need a second.
I'll make a second.
Brian made the second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0 and Tammy Hardy is not present for the vote.
Thank you. And I see we've got Kenny that's logged in. He's just in time. We'll make sure we can get Mark in the door. Bobby, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Bobby. Appreciate you for coming. Thank you, sir.
You too, Harry.
Well, I think Stephen's out here. He just came to the front.
Does Kenny have a Louisville hat on?
That's what it looked like.
I do. I got a reason for that.
Well, I hope you do. I hope you do.
My oldest son plays baseball there.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good then. That's good.
Well, my daughter went there for a while.
Cool deal. Cool deal.
Sheena went for a while.
Brian, you don't give him a hard time. I got all my Louisville hat upstairs.
They paid for my son's education.
That was Sheena's.
Absolutely, buddy. I really, I wouldn't call you out, Kenny. It's more so to call Jeremy out because I know he's a, his alma mater. He's awful proud of it. Yes, sir.
Jeremy.
Well, they're, they're really good at baseball.
My daughter went to UK.
I understand.
Then she transferred to Louisville. Swore she'd never go to Eastern. So she transferred to Eastern, graduated from there. But Louisville was her favorite school.
It was her favorite. Yes, it was her favorite.
Even though she's a big, big UK fan, Louisville was her favorite academic school.
Who doesn't love just Louisville red? I mean, blue's all depressing. It's on fire.
Blue is calming.
Color passion.
Well, you can see Kenny, he's on fire then. He's got all kinds of red on.
Yes.
Well, I'm also Clark County. I also know.
Okay.
Oh, yes, Cardinals.
We'll chalk that up to that. Gotcha.
No, Sheena, when she called in to call, she says whichever one sends the letter back, sections were, Louisville, I mean, UK beat Louisville by two days.
No kidding. Wow. That's giving Kenny a rough way to go by the Louisville hat.
Louisville hat?
Yeah, his son.
What's even worse?
His son plays baseball there, except.
He's like Babcon. He's wearing a red shirt tonight. Babcon shows up at the Doggone Dedication meeting wearing red.
That was terrible coordination.
Yeah, I guarantee it. I still ain't forgave them.
They're good people, though.
I'll tell you what, they've been fantastic on this job.
And they, they hung that flag for us in the gym the other day. He just said, yeah, I'm gonna be there. We'll hang it. Yeah, we'll hang it. We don't care.
It's a Friday night, so let's get moving.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the special call board meeting at 6 PM in our Estill County Boardroom. We're also going to be at teleconference this evening. Mr. Saylor, I'd like to welcome everyone and we would like to stand and say our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name. If we have any guests there, I'd like to remind them that can sign in at the entrance way into the boardroom. Mr. Saylor, first on our agenda, we have recognitions this evening.
Well, and just real quick, I will recognize that we do have Stephen and Jeremy here with us tonight. I allowed all of the other administrators, since it is Friday night and we play football tonight in Laurel County, that I dismissed them from the meeting. But Mr. Mark Rollins has made his way all the way from western Kentucky to come visit with us tonight because of the bond sale for Estill Springs. And Kenny and Peter are with us. The only way they can get on TV is through a Zoom meeting. So we're glad to have both of them with us. So as far as the recognitions go, we will begin recognitions at the next board meeting. Jeremy, I'm going to ask you to please remind me, we've got to start reminding our student rep. I did not send information to her about the meeting tonight. Probably on a Friday night, she might not have been here anyway, but she won't be here if we don't ask her. So we've got to get her invited and get her back. But starting with September, we'll have school presentations at the board. We may have to, like I said, step out to the gym or whatever, but we will have school presentations from our schools. And we'll also begin our mountain mover recognitions again in September. And I also have a group of administrators we'll want to recognize at the September board meeting. There are recent NISSL participants. We've not done that in three years. And as of right now, all of our school administration staff has been through NISSL, which is absolute. And as of right now, all of our school administration staff has been through NISL, which is absolute, there's not, I doubt there's another school district in the state that can say that, that their administrators has been through that national leadership cadres. So we're really appreciative of them. So that's it for school recognitions. You're muted again, Ms. Donna.
It just keeps doing that.
That's okay. We'll keep reminding.
Next, we have our facilities and construction update. And first on the agenda, we have our Estill County High School Phase Seven renovation project.
That's why Kenny's here.
Exactly. So I was there last Friday night, we were all a couple opener and I thought it was a great night. I thought it was a great representation of the best county, the district. And I told you guys, get down to the wire, get it done.
Make it presentable. I was more done than it was, but with the weather being the last three or four months, I think we did what we told you we would do. And I'm hoping you guys enjoyed yourselves and again, you know, hope you were presentable in a sense where everybody was happy with it. So we have work to do still on that project and we're working on it as we speak. As you may know or may not know, we are, Jeff Henderson's there with Tennis Technologies and they started your track. And we're wrapping up what little concrete work we got left. There's some fencing to do. There's some landscaping to do still. And our hopes are is by the time you guys play again, we'll have that completed to a point where, you know, you won't even know that we were even there anymore. So that's my objective. The greenhouse will probably be, I'm gonna say probably around the 10th or so of September, we'll have it wrapped up and done with, which leaves us with the interior work, which again, I think I told you just last time, the second floor, the first floor admin area and the lower level are all complete. And we're wrapping up, we'll be wrapping up the gymnasium and the gym lobby in, by the end of September, first of October. So it's the only way we said it would go and I'm hoping to get done a little early. I think your completion date is October 26th and I'd like to be out of there before then. So again, I hope you guys are happy. If you're not, let us know and we'll fix whatever needs to be fixed. But I thought it looked really nice up there last Friday.
Well, I will comment that you all did a heck of a job getting it ready. They were pouring concrete that morning. I'd say that whole end zone right there from about the concession stand all the way over to where we came through the gate, there was no concrete, there was no sod, there was no nothing on that morning. And they poured all that concrete, they got that sodded, it was done, concrete was dry, looked great. Nobody noticed anything. If anybody said anything wasn't happy, then, you know, you're not gonna please them.
I was there with my mom that morning. They were crazy for concrete.
Yeah, it was, it was, and it was a great night. You all got everything done. There's few little things. I will tell you, I think they finished the track this afternoon. If not, they will finish it in the morning. So the track is done. I think it's gonna be, the Striper's gonna be about two weeks behind. And I didn't know if you'd been updated on that, Kenny. And I think they're gonna start painting the gym on Tuesday. Bastin is, we contracted with them, since they're already part of the crew on this job, we're gonna paint the gym top to bottom, all the way down and just make sure that it's totally redone. And a lot, I think everybody's been excited about the football field and everything. I'm just gonna tell you, you've got one more big review and that's gonna be your gym when we get ready to start basketball. Hopefully, it's gonna be ready for volleyball postseason. But if not, then by the time basketball season starts, it's gonna be really, really nice. So that's it. Unless the board's got any other questions, we can move on and as soon as Ms. Esprit unmutes herself.
I got it.
Good deal.
Well, it was a wonderful night and the only thing for me is we were missing Brian and I know he really wanted to be there.
I did, I did.
Emmy wasn't, Emmy wasn't able to be there either.
Tammy wasn't there either. I almost forgot. Yeah, Tammy wasn't there, Brian wasn't there. Brian and I have had many conversations about this.
Well, it's, it's a fantastic facility and I tell you what, even if we'd had to walk on gravel to get in there that night, it was still better than what we'd had before. Everybody's just so impressed with that facility. I'm just tickled pink with it. I know, I know this community's tickled pink with it as well, so.
They're overwhelmed, literally.
They are. I just.
I mean, I watched it on NFHS and I'm not lying.
Tear too. My wife tried to FaceTime me on the way in and, you know, that's one thing I kept listening to, William and Danny, you know, doing that first call. That was the, the whole deal, you getting them back to do one more season in that new stadium. And I heard him say, he said it multiple times, that when he walked in, it was almost like he wasn't in Estill County, kinda, you know? And it's just pretty amazing, pretty amazing.
And just all the people that showed up and participated in the tailgating and different events there before the game.
It was no doubt the biggest crowd we've ever had at a football game. So probably the biggest crowd for any event here in Estill County. And speaking of William and Danny, I think their last year has turned into possibly three or four more.
That'd be good.
I think they reconsidered. I don't think they're gonna quit.
That'd be great.
That'd be wonderful.
They had to put jackets on in the third quarter. It got so cold in the press box. They were, they were living high on the hog up there in their new digs.
Digs. I tell you what, you couldn't have got them a penthouse in New York City and them been any happier than they were the other night.
Well, and Peter and Kenny both kept promising, we're gonna bring it home. And boy, they did. You all didn't disappoint and we just value the relationship we've had with you all and you all really put on a show Friday night. So thank you all.
We thank you.
Good deal.
Thank you.
I guess next on our agenda, we have consideration or approval of a pay, a pay estimate number 11 for the high school Phase Seven renovation project.
Yes, it's for $1,833,513.39. It's been reviewed by Codell and by Ross Tarrant and my recommendation is to approve that payment.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the payout.
I will make a motion, Donna.
Okay, Brian makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Sheila makes a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Set four oh vote and Tammy Hardy is not pressing. Okay, next on our agenda, we have consideration or approval of change order three dash two for Carmichael Masonry and twelve dash three for CNC Mechanical and thirteen dash five for Babcon and fifteen dash five for Rising Sun Development.
And we can take all of these at once. Kenny's got the update on each of those change orders. Good news on all of them.
Yes, it's really good news. So the two for Carmichael is a, it's a no cost change for you guys. What we did on the project, we had Rising Sun go out and purchase plywood and plastic to cover your gym board. And whoever had work in there would then pay them a portion of that work to Rising Sun.
And instead of having Rising Sun and Babcon trading money, we did it through the contract, which is we brought a deduct to Carmichael in this sense and turned around and went to add back to Rising Sun. So that 281525 is, is a, is no cost to you guys. CNC Mechanical change order 12 dash three, it includes the same exact 281525. It also has a credit of $10,075 to you guys. We deleted some of the gas line run. We made a run for them, working with the local utility companies. That saved you guys, like I said, $10,000. There was a add of $1,700 to tie in the last few feet of the, the new sanitary manhole that we put in and what Mr. Ruder had put in for you guys. So there was, there was a small add for that. And then there was another credit for $7,092.50 for being, and replacing concrete floors in existing high school restrooms. So we came up with a better way to put the new work in without having to tear up the old floors. And again, it saved you guys money. And then lastly, there was an add for $6,200 for the GRDs with the, with the roof trusses. What was ordered wouldn't work, so we had to readjust that. That was an add. But at the end of the day, the credit for that 12 dash three change order is $13,118.50. So you guys got out good on that one as well. Moving on to Babcon, again, the 281525 for the portion of work for the protecting the floor is in there. And then also too, through the direction of Mr. Saylor, he wanted to replace and rewire all the fire alarm fixtures in the tower of the high school compatible with, with the existing high school fire alarm system. So compatible with the ATC, compatible with the actual high school system for a safer environment there. That change order total for, excuse me, for 13 dash five. Rising Sun, the change order of 3,688.15, that was on Carmichael and CNC paying them for the wood and the plastic of 8,045.75. And then a couple of credits for deleting some scope of work. One was the lockers in existing field house. And the other one was a credit for deleting the fencing at the grinder pump at the baseball and softball field. So that was a minimal add to you guys at 3,097.6, but that's not even really an add because of the deducts were taken away from Babcon and Carmichael and CNC offset that. So all in all, this is probably one of the nicer four change orders you'll get for you guys through the projects. It was very minimal cost. Actually, it was no cost. You actually saved money in this, in this run change orders.
Anyone have any questions for Kenny?
Yes.
Just so you all, just so you all.
Just so you all know, the problem was, is that when the fire alarm would go off at the ATC, the people in the high school did not know it. And the Pedway Tower is connected to the high school, so it was connected to ATC. So you could actually had a fire in the Pedway Tower and the high school wouldn't have known it and it's connected. Vice versa, if there's a fire at the high school, nobody, the ATC would know it. So if our students started coming back across the Pedway, they could have walked right into a fire. So now the two buildings are one system. They needed to be connected for life safety issues. So that's been corrected. So that was a, that was a big life safety issue. So my recommendation is approve all four change orders. We can do that with one motion.
Okay, I need a motion to approve all four change orders as discussed.
I'll make a motion, Donna.
Brian makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second, Donna.
Sheila makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote.
Kenny, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good weekend.
Thanks.
See you, guys.
And so next, we have on our agenda to discuss future projects. First, we have the Estill County Middle School Esser restroom renovation project. Give us an update, Peter.
So the work at the middle school is complete. We do have a short punch list that we want the contractor to work off on that project, but I do anticipate closeout for the project in October. So at this point, Jarboe is, has, is not on site, but there are a few items on a punch list that we're gonna want them to address. And I do anticipate a fairly sizable deductive change order on the project coming your all's way on that one. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys have on, on the middle school project.
The good news is it's complete and those restrooms are unreal. I mean, they're very nice. It's definitely an upgrade for our facility and for our students and especially our parents and visitors whenever they come to events there at that gym. Those two bathrooms was completely renovated with all new fixtures and everything. So absolutely a great project. Jarboe's done a fantastic job on that project and as Peter said, we ought to have a BG4 in October. We got one change order coming at us in September. It's almost a $40,000 deductive change for things that we saved on the project. And you should get a BG4 in October and we can close that thing out before Christmas.
Okay, so next, we have consideration or approval of payout location O3 for the Estill Middle School Esser Restroom Renovation Project, which is BG number 22-175, $130,048.85.
Been reviewed by Ross Tarrant and my recommendation, we make the payment.
Okay, I need a motion to make the payment. Is that Sheila?
Yes.
Does that make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Carrie makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Like to call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Let's see, next on our agenda, we have our South Urban Early Childhood Center Esser renovation project. We have an update from Peter.
Yeah, so the South Urban project continue, work is continuing with Jarboe on the site there. Some material lead times have led to sort of a holding pattern, if you will. I do expect them to get masonry, which should ship around the, the week after Labor Day. Once they have the masonry, they'll be able to get the rest of the exterior of the building complete. And then we do have storefront, which is, are the windows for the building that have, that should be in before the first of October. And there's a little bit of hardware that should be in by the first of October as well. Back when we generated this, we, we anticipated some of these issues and the substantial completion for the project isn't till the middle part of October and I feel comfortable that they're gonna be complete with the project by that time. I'll be happy to give anybody or answer any questions that you guys have on South Urban.
And guys, that project inside, we're perfectly fine inside. I know the kids are probably tired of looking at plywood windows, but that's just the fact of the matter. We have classrooms all over the district that does not have windows in them. It's a little strange over there, but when it's done, that building is gonna be a showplace as well. And so it's really a great project. And again, Jarboe's done a fantastic job and, and just so you know, it's not, anything is not their fault. I mean, there, there's just supply chain issues in that area especially. These are aluminum storefronts and aluminum windows and that is the holdup. Aluminum is the, the issue in getting those windows ready. But I, I look for them honestly, Peter. I'd be surprised if they're not done by the end of October.
I think they'll be done before the substantial completion date in the middle part of October. Yes, I do believe they'll be finished.
We're probably looking at a BG4. If not, the November meeting, definitely December.
Yes, yes.
All right, so we need to consider approval of a pay application O3 for the South Urban Esser renovation project, which is BG 22-176.
I'll make the motion, Donna.
Okay, I have a motion from Brian. Do I have a second? Sheila makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Like to call for a vote at this time? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with the four oh vote. Let's see, next, we have consideration or approval of a change order for the South Urban Elementary School Esser renovation project, which is BG 22-176.
Peter, if you don't care, let's take both of those at once and we'll have one motion to approve both of them. There, I don't think there's any problem with that just for time consideration.
That is not, that's not a problem. These are very similar change orders, right? So it's a, it's an existing building and I think that we ran into a couple of issues at South Urban. The first one is it had to do with the casework in each of the classrooms. It was imperative for us, when we removed the old windows, to put in a new wall above the existing wall. And so in order to do that, we had to remove the top shelf of the existing casework in every classroom. And we had anticipated there being a little bit more structure available to hold up new, a new top to that casework. And as it turned out, additional, additional structure was needed. If you guys have been in the school, this, this casework looks fantastic that they have installed, that Jarboe has gotten installed. And that's the first, that was the first issue. The second issue had to do with the new secure entry vestibule. We needed to cut a new door into the reception area to provide flow, safe flow into the school. We needed to cut a new door into the reception area to provide flow, safe flow into the school. Uh, we, we, uh, Jarboe, I should say, when they discovered that area, discovered that there was actually wa, fire alarm wiring in the area where the door was to be removed, which is a surprise because it's a firewall. Um, which was interesting and sort of caught us off guard. And in order to get that fire alarm back up and functioning, uh, we needed to move forward with getting that repaired, uh, before school. So both of these were found conditions. Um, and, and, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that I haven't already answered for you.
What were the amounts of those two change orders?
Yeah. So I'm sorry, the, the casework change order was thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents. And then the fire alarm relocation was twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and twenty cents.
And just to point out, we've already seen a, a large deductive change order for that project. This is an Esser project as well. Uh, we've seen a, a large deductive change order already. And you're getting ready to see about a forty thousand dollar deductive change order on the middle school. So when everything push comes to shove, you're going to have less in change orders from the positive side than you do the negative side. There'll be an overall savings on those two projects.
Yes. Right. The first change order that you had on the project was a twenty-four thousand dollar deduct.
So when the two projects are done, if we do not run into anything else, you're looking at about a twenty thousand dollar, uh, positive uh, cash flow back to the district on the Esser funds that we can use, uh, uh, to, uh, support our kids in other matters.
So I need a motion to approve change order oh two and oh three for South Urban Esser project.
I'll make a motion.
Sheila makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carrie makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, with, with none, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. That brings us down to item C on our agenda for the Estill County High School Esser Fieldhouse restroom renovation project. We talk a lot about restrooms.
They're important. They're important.
So, uh, so just so you all know that, uh, Anthony and his crew at SES, uh, did a good job of pulling everything together for the game the other night. Uh, if you were in the restrooms, you'll notice that the new floor was not installed. That's the only thing that hasn't been installed on the project. And I do anticipate, uh, that being installed before the next soccer game on the third of September. So we will, um, I, I have not talked and I've not spoken to Anthony today, but I spoke to him earlier in the week. And I think that they're still on track to get that done. So, um, and those, those restrooms will be, uh, finished and ready to go certainly. If not by the third for the soccer game, uh, they'll be ready to go by the next football game.
Sheila has a question.
What type of flooring you calling down?
It is a hot seat, uh, flooring like you have at the ATC and also at South Urban. And now at the middle school. You have a lot of places now, so.
And so you all will know, this project may rem, remain open a little while longer. That we are exploring the fact of, uh, installing a family restroom right there off of the main entrance coming into that stadium. There's a storage room there. You remember at the time, we couldn't expand the men's bathroom. So there's just a little bit of concern to make sure that we've got enough restrooms in that facility. We thought it'd be a nice touch to, uh, add a family restroom for families to be able to use if they've got young children. And while we're there, we're probably just going to hop in there and redo that middle school football locker room restroom as well. They're right next to each other. So we may hold this project open a little while. Uh, it may be, uh, spring, uh, actually before we're done, but Anthony, uh, is willing to do that work. And there's already been a, a sizable deductive change order on that as well. So we don't anticipate a, a lot bigger cost. We just know that there's going to be some more work coming. So, um, that is, um, pretty much the update. Uh, they're working on cost estimates right now and Anthony will get us a price. And as soon as we do, we'll, we'll shoot that price. But I will let you all make the decision on that. I won't pull the, I won't pull the trigger on that without you all knowing what it's going to cost and what the net, uh, cost is going to be to the board.
Okay. With that discussion, we need to consider approval of a pay application oh one with associated district purchase order invoices for the Estill County High School Stadium restroom renovation project.
One hundred thousand, one hundred fifty-six dollars and seventeen cents, looks like.
So I need a motion to approve.
Sheila?
Sheila makes a motion. Do I have a second? Brian makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Uh, next we have our Estill Springs Elementary Esser renovation and addition project. Give us an update, Peter.
All right. So, uh, Codell is hosting a, a pre-construction meeting on Monday afternoon, this coming Monday at, afternoon at one PM. So things are getting ready to start up at Estill Springs. Um, and, uh, you know, to be, to be honest, I think that's probably uh, it from, from my standpoint. Kenny may have a lot more information for you as far as like, sequencing of the construction, but we're, we're excited to be there on Monday to help get this, this thing, uh, kicked off. I'll be happy to answer any questions on that.
I will add, Ms. Esfert, that I've spoken to Kenny and Casey Cullen, who you all met at the ballgame the other night with Codell, is going to be the manager on that, on site uh, for that project. Their trailer is set. They're ready to go. And you should start seeing some work take place here in the next few weeks on that facility. As of right now, I've been told that the completion date for that project is scheduled to be June the first. If that is the case, uh, we will have a dedication sometime around June thirtieth and, and, uh, I'll see you all on the other side of it. So that's, uh, that's the plan right now. So hopefully we'll get that project done before, uh, I leave here on June thirtieth. That's the plan.
And Peter, June thirtieth is going to wrap it up for you.
Ah, whew. I, I think, I think maybe so. I have to come up with a new list.
Well, we'll be doing that in November, December.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess next on our agenda, we have approval of a proposal for special inspection services at, from S and ME for Estill Springs Elementary Esser renovation and addition projects, which is BG two-two dash two oh seven.
Yeah. So we did solicit, uh, uh, proposals for special inspections for the Estill Springs project, and we received them back. SNME was the low, the low, uh, proposal. I think because the, the board decided not to take alternates numbers three and four, I think their total, uh, proposal came out to thirty-four thousand dollars. And we do, uh, recommend going with SNME on this project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We've worked with them quite a bit on all of our projects and my recommendation is to approve SM and E.
I'd like to call for a motion to approve for S and ME to do the Estill Springs Esser renovation and addition project. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Brian makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Sheila makes a second. Do we have any discussion at this time? Okay, with none, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Okay, Mr. Sailor, we need to recess our meeting for the School District Finance Corporation meeting.
Yes, if you don't care, we'll need a motion to, uh, go into recess, uh, to conduct a district finance corporation meeting.
Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to go into recess.
I'll make a motion.
Sheila makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Brian makes a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in recess.
All right, Ms. Chair, uh, lady, you are now the president of the District Finance Corporation. So you need to call that meeting to order.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the District Finance Corporation meeting. First on our agenda, we have consideration or approval of a resolution authorizing the sale of the Estill County School District Finance Corporation School Building Revenue Bonds Series of Twenty Twenty Two Advertising for the sale of bonds and approving all our documents in connection with the bonds.
We have Mark Rawlings with us and Mark can go through everything for us and let us know exactly, uh, what we would be bonding. And, uh, we've seen, uh, this information for, we're glad he's with us. So Mark, take it away.
So, uh, thank you guys for letting me come tonight. Um, and by the way, the football field looks fantastic. I drove past it. I couldn't come to the game last Friday, but it looks amazing. Um, and I'm excited to see that project come to fruition for you guys. So tonight, uh, you're going to do two things. The School District Finance Corporation, which is also the board, the same people, um, you're going to approve a resolution that actually authorizes the bonds. And for those of you who haven't been through this process before, the reason that we do this is that in their infinite wisdom, the framers of the Kentucky constitution and our legislators in Frankfurt say that school districts themselves can't issue debt that extends beyond the end of the fiscal year. So the workaround was that the School District Finance Corporation was created. Finance Corporation will actually issue the bonds and the Board of Education will enter into a lease with Finance Corporation and make lease payments to them that are exactly equal to the bond payments, um, on bonds. So we're anticipating about two point seven million dollars. If we could sell bonds today, then interest rate would be about a three point eight eight. Um, they have been going up this week and I'm hoping that we'll still come in below four percent when we sell. And we are scheduled to sell the bonds on September eighth. So that's the date that we'll actually lock in the interest rate. And I'll be in touch with Mr. Sailor that day, um, as we get those in and get everything locked in and final structure on those and everything done. Um, should be a pretty easy process. You know, in the past, we've done the underlying bond rating. I don't think for an issue this size that it was worth much on your interest rate. Plus there's additional costs associated with it. So we're just using the state intercept rating on this one. Makes the process easier. Um, and I know you guys have about a billion things going on as evidence of the agenda tonight. So we wanted to keep it as simple as possible. Um, like I said, hopefully we'll get less than four percent when we sell here in just a couple of weeks.
Anyone have any questions? So Ms. Esfert, you will need a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the resolution as discussed.
I will make the motion.
No, second.
Brian makes a motion and Sheila makes a second. Do we have any discussion at this time? With none, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with a four oh vote. So at this time, I'd like to call for an adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Sheila makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Brian makes a second. All in favor? Motion carries four oh. Okay, so now we need to consider approval of a resolution authorizing a contract rent and lease with the Estill County School District Finance Corporation in connection with the series twenty twenty-two bonds and approving all other documents in connection with the bonds.
And Rebecca, just make a note that we called the, uh, regular, or the special call board meeting back to, uh, in session at six thirty-eight.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion in regards to this? With none, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. Okay.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate you being here.
I, I want to add one more thing. Um, in capacity, so even with this project, you're still going to have more than a million dollars of bonding capacity left over. So if you guys scrounge around and find another project you want to do.
Not while I'm here.
You still have a little bit more. Um.
How much did he say? I couldn't hear.
Over a million dollars. Uh, which is better than the nine hundred thousand we had eight years ago when I arrived. Plus we did forty-six million dollars.
I was going to say, you, you've got more bonding capacity now than you had when you started. And you've done forty-six, forty-seven million dollars worth of, of bonds. Um, it's pretty amazing.
I'd say there's not another school district our size in the state of Kentucky that's got more bang for the buck than we got.
It's, it's amazing. I, I've never seen anything like it. I'm so proud for you guys.
There's no way.
It took board leadership.
Leadership, it took vision, it took a good team here at the central office, but it's been a fantastic ride. And it ain't over yet. We got a lot to do yet.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, so moving along with our agenda, uh, Peter, we've got to talk about the Estill County High School Esser sanitary line replacement project.
Yeah.
Once again.
So, uh, this, this one is finished. You guys were out there at the football field the other night and, uh, there were, there, this one wasn't hanging out there. So it's, it's all complete. Um, I do anticipate, uh, being able to get you all BG four information on the sanitary line replacement in September. Um, so the, the pay app that they have put forward is, is tonight, is the majority of their pay. We should be able to do a final pay app. And, uh, do a BG four next month for lag code. Be happy to answer any questions that you have on it.
The commodes did not back up, so it's, it's complete.
It'll lead, yeah.
Plus we've had eight days of school and the entire high school is connected to this line. So we're in good shape. It would have definitely backed up long ago. Correct.
So I need a motion to put this project to rest. Sheila makes a motion. Do I have a second? I knew that was a Brian Kobe second. Do we have any discussion at this time? I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor?
I'll vote aye on that too.
Okay. Next, we're down to item F, which is our district central storage building demolition project or the old urban high school project. Um, Peter, do you want to give us an update?
Um, yes, I will. Um, so I did have a meeting earlier today. It was a teams meeting with the, the contractor there. They have, they ran into a bit of, uh, of an issue. They're, they're located in Lost Creek and, uh, lost a lot of their equipment in the floods last month. So uh, they, they were, they were stalled up, but they have gotten equipment back together. And they, uh, they have started work again. We had a good, Michael Mays and I had a really good meeting with them this morning. And they're well aware of everything that they need to get done. And I anticipate them getting it done as quickly as possible. I, maybe we'll see them at the Estill Springs meeting on Monday to coordinate sort of turning over this site to Codell here in the early stages of the Estill Springs project.
Guys, they lost all of their equipment, I believe, except for two pieces of equipment. They, they have an excavator and they have a bulldozer. Like, they lost all of their trucks. Several other pieces of equipment, but the bulldozer here is on site. They've been working all week. They're wanting to honor this contract and I appreciate that. And, uh, just to make a statement, it may not be the time, but I tell you what, if you've not been over in Eastern Kentucky, if you've not been to Breathitt and Knott and Perry, you, you won't believe it. I'm telling you, you, words cannot describe what happened over there. And, uh, I was glad to see the legislature step up today to help, uh, the people in those counties. And listen, there's other areas, you know, that's the three big areas, but there was other counties that was impacted as well. So, uh, So, we're very thankful for Combs. They're wanting to do the right thing, and, and probably at this point in time, they can finish the project, they probably can use the money, to be honest, to get back on their feet. So, I'm glad they're able to finish. They're working hard, and I appreciate that, and I don't think there's an action item.
There's not.
Uh, well, item G.
You just thought you were done with the sanitary.
I thought I was done later. Item G is the Estill County High School Emergency Sanitary Line Replacement Project.
Yeah, so, so this one, just like it's, it's south side buddy next to the football field, this is the piece of it next to the high school building. It is also complete, and I also anticipate closeout in September on this portion of the project. Be happy to answer any questions that you have. Mr. Ruder, really, did a bang-up job there. It was hard to find somebody that wanted to do that work, and once he got wind of it, he really did jump in, and I think the Board did the right thing.
Hey, we owe them, we owe them big time for getting that job done and not tearing it in front of that building up like we thought was going to happen. I'm telling you, you would not have had school today if we had not found them and they had not been willing to do this work. You wouldn't be in school today. I'm telling you, that, that was a major, major project. And I will say one thing, we got a pay app here to approve on that, and I know Ms. Estefred will move to that. This right here is a prime example of why you don't put things off when you've got an opportunity to fix them the first time. Back during this project in the mid 2000s, like 2006, 2007, this sewer line was scheduled to be replaced, and it wasn't. And I can tell you, at that time, it sure in the heck wasn't a million dollars to replace that line, but because there was a decision made not to replace that line, then now it's cost us a million dollars for that sewer line, including what was part of the high school Phase 7 project. That's one thing I appreciate about this Board, and I think we've done it on every project. We've pretty much taken all alternates, and we've completed things. We didn't leave them out there for somebody else to complete, and I'm proud of that because I'm telling you, prices aren't going down. It's not going to get cheaper to do this work. It, it's going to get more and more expensive. I'm not sitting here to criticize anybody from the past, but what I am saying to this Board and future Boards, you don't put things off today that you can do right now, because I'm telling you, it's going to cost you a whole lot more money later on. So, I know, Ms. Donna, you've got a pay app there to get an approval for.
I need a motion to approve the pay application for the Estill County High School Emergency Sanitary Line Project, which is BG22-456 for $492,425.64. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Sheila makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Go on, Brian.
I'll second it. Then we'll let you down.
Do we have any discussion? I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries with a 4-0 vote. Next, that brings us down to item H, which is our West Urban Pavement Improvement Project. We need an update on that, Peter.
Yes, so, the, the guys at West Urban are, after, after some prodding, really got moving a couple of weeks ago. This week, they kind of ran out of luck on getting asphalt down, but it's my understanding they expect it on Monday, and that should be the, the, they should be able to wrap this thing up here in the next week or two. They, they were slow out of the gate, but they have, once they got a fire lit under them, they, they got busy, but the asphalt was not available to be delivered this week. So, hopefully, we'll see that one wrap up here really soon for the district. And I'll be happy to answer any questions for you all on that one as well.
And I hate to say it, guys, I confirmed that blacktop was not available. I mean, and it's a shame you have to call and confirm something, but I did call and confirm they, they will have asphalt on Monday as long as it does not rain. So, I do feel good that finally, we did, I don't know, between all of us, I guess, we finally got a fire lit. They are past their contract. They're past the substantial completion date, and they have been notified that they are incurring a $500 a day fine for every day that they're past due date. And my plan is to enforce that fine because they have not, they have not finished that project on time. West Urban is getting along without it, but we need them to get done and get out of there. So, that's, they don't air yet.
We were thinking that that project was going to be ready to roll as soon as the blacktop factories open when the warm weather started.
Yes, that, that is true. This Board awarded their contract in March, so.
It would have been done by July 15th, and that gave them plenty of extra time. So, like I said, every day since July 15th, they're incurring a fine. I know Peter and him's got to go back and look at exactly what weather days, but there wasn't a lot of weather days in June and July because that was a dry period of time, so.
Right.
They have been notified, their president does know, he heard it straight from my mouth that we were enforcing that fine.
Okay, so, we need approval of a pay application for the West Urban Pavement Improvement Project, which is BG22-178 for $111,789. I need a motion to approve that. Was that Brian?
Yes.
And I need a second.
I'll second.
That's Carrie.
That was Carrie.
Carrie's.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Do I have to call for a vote at this time? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with a 4-0 vote. And then we have consideration or approval of a change, some change orders for the West Urban Project. Do you want to talk about that, Peter?
I will. It, this one, you guys, is good news. The change orders often aren't, but this is good news. This is a $0 change order grouping, if you will. The contractor needed to move some dollars from the direct purchase orders back into their contract. So, the first three, the, the first, the first one listed there is for their contract, which is the $28,990. But the other three that you see listed there, 2143-0101, 2143-0201, and 2143-0301, are all D-DoCS that have been pulled out of the DPOs and added to the contractor's contract. They, they didn't get their, they did not get their direct purchase order numbers correct out of the gate, and they needed to make those adjustments. So, all four in total is a $0 change for the Board. Donna, you are muted. Sorry.
I need a motion to approve the change order.
Sheila.
Sheila, do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Brian, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. I can't see you all now. All of that went away. So, that's why I keep saying, who said that?
That's okay. We had something happen there, it may go it flash, so I don't know what's going on, but.
So, next on our agenda, we have our Estill County School Safety and ADA Upgrade Project. Peter, give us an update.
Yeah, so, this one has to do with the hardware at the middle school and at South Urban to get it up on the central system. We are programming that project next week with the district. I do expect bid documents ready to, to put out on the street in the month of October. We'll certainly get them to you in October for your approval before we put them on the street, and then hopefully, we'll be able to bid this by December and get things turned around for you guys in the, I guess, January to May semester. So, that's that. And, and just so you know, that's a, the, the BG1 for that one was approved here really recently, and it's with a total construction cost of about $317,000, a project cost of $380,000.
Hey, guys, just to add, just to add real quick, what does this do? This allows for a new level of safety in our school district from the standpoint that all of our buildings will have electronic access after these two projects are done. That means that all these keys that are floating around out here, you know, that people's had over the years will no longer be usable, even here at the central office, every building. So, other than maintenance, the custodians, and the building principals, there will be no keys to outside doors. All staff members, including staff members at this office, they will scan in with their badge. You know, there'll be electronic badge scanners at each of the doors, so the only thing, the only key a teacher has is the key to their classroom. So, it, it gives you the ability that people just can't come and go in your buildings at any time. Teachers, when they come to the school, they'll scan in with their badge. So, automatically, we know who enters the building, we know what time they entered the building. Security cameras are already there, so we know when they leave the building. It gives us that greater level of security that we've not been able to have in the past, and this is huge. I did not know how we were going to do this, quite honestly. And then, all of a sudden, it sort of fell in place that we could finish our last two buildings, so I'm really tickled about this. This is something, hopefully, we can get it done in the spring semester, but it adds that new level of security that we've not been able to have before. So, it's not a big project in terms of money. It's less than probably about $300,000 somewhere in there, but it is huge in terms of safety and security, not only our, for our students, our staff, but also our buildings and our facilities moving forward. Yes. Board members will have a scan, so when you come here to the board meeting, you won't have to have somebody come down, open the door. You'll scan your badge at the gym door, and the door will open, and you can come in. So, you won't have to wait behind lock doors any longer. If you want to visit other schools, we can make all the accommodations in the world. So, different people, those badges can be programmed so that you can have, for instance, the basketball coach at the high school would be able to not only get into the high school, but they can get into the central office gym. He cannot get into South Urban because he doesn't have any reason to be there. So, those things are easily programmed, and just gives Mr. Simpson something else to do. He's running out of stuff. So, it makes his job a little, you know, gives him job security. Job security is important around here. Exactly. So, Ms. Donna, I think it's probably important now that we hire Ross Tarrant to do this work before they go any further. And that's the motion.
I, I need approval to hire Ross Tarrant as our architect for the agreement for the Estill County School Safety and ADA Upgrades Project, which is BG23-087. Sheila makes a motion.
I'll second that.
Brian Kobe makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with a 4-0 vote. Next, we have some action items. We have, first on our agenda, our 2022-2023 tax rates. And first, we have our property tax rate, real and personal property evaluation.
As you know, we just had our public hearing right before the board meeting, and I believe that as advertised, it is the intention of the Board to set the property tax rate for this school year at 49.7 cents. That is a decrease of 1.6 cents from last year's rate, which means the taxpayers of Estill County's tax bills will be lowered, but the school system will still receive an additional $300,000 in revenue. So, it's a win-win situation for the Board. It's also a win-win situation for our taxpayers in our community. It's my recommendation to set that tax rate, 49.7 cents per $100 of property evaluation.
I need a motion to set the tax rate as discussed.
I will make the motion.
Brian makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is that Carrie Smallwood makes a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any discussion?
So, I don't want to.
$319,000 in revenue that it'll generate extra for us is dependent on people paying their taxes.
That is correct, and Carrie had a question.
So, like, you know, I'm looking at the, if our codes, revenue tax, our type, so, like with the distilled spirits tax, so does that, is that not included with the taxes that we?
Now, there, there are different taxable entities. This is just the property itself would be, but the sale of the spirits, there would not be.
Okay.
We do not, anything along the lines, I, I don't think there's like a cable television tax in Estill County. There could be, but in order for you to do that, you would have to pass the tax rate, and it would be subject to recall. You know, there's some different things like that that is out there that we've never had to do for our community or had to pass those rates along, but distilled spirits was not one of the items that was taxable at the time either.
Right.
Yeah. This is for basically real and tangible property.
Right, okay.
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to call for a motion.
I think we had the motion, and we had the second, so I think you're ready for a vote, Mrs.
Well, I'm ready for a vote. Any opposed? So, motion carries. Next, we have our motor vehicle and watercraft rate. I think that's been the same for a long time, Mr. Saylor.
For years upon years upon years, it's 54, 54.8 cents, and that's no change. So, it's my recommendation to set that rate at 54.8.
So, I need a motion and a second to keep that rate the same. Is that Sheila?
Yes, ma'am.
And do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Brian makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries with a 4-0 vote. Next, we have consideration or approval of bank account changes.
These changes are there. Authorization for check signatures because we do have new principles. We also have the new account for the Athletic Foundation that's being set up right now. We just have to approve those so that they can move forward. So, if that's okay with you all, my recommendation is to approve these changes.
I need a motion to approve the changes as discussed.
I'll make the motion.
Sheila makes a motion, and Brian makes a second. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Do we have any discussion? Like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 4-0 vote. Next, we're down to our consent items. Mr. Saylor, do you want to discuss these?
Really, not a lot of stuff out of usual. You have your minutes from your past board meetings, Treasury Report, payment of bills. We have an MOA with Morehead State University, and it's got to do with our dual credit classes. We have a.
A proposal for speech-language pathologist services, and we have an MOU agreement with Frisky Corps concerning some of our workers in those programs. You've approved these in the past, and I'd ask you to approve them now, all one motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Brian makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Sheila makes a second. Do we have any discussion or at this time? I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Your consent items pass. Mr. Saylor, that brings us to our superintendent's report.
Uh, you, of course, you have your personnel. Uh, you, of course, you have your personnel actions. It's been attached to your uh, online link. Uh, the school update enrollment attendance, we talked about that a little bit earlier, but uh, as of right now, uh, enrollment is almost one hundred students higher than it was last year. Uh, so that is a lot of hard work by our DPP, Mr. Donald Norton, getting out here and getting these kids back in school. I think it's also because of COVID restrictions relaxing a little bit. I think uh, we had a lot of parents that decided to bring their kids back. Um, this is also, I believe, about ten students, less than ten students uh, lower than what it was pre-pandemic. So it's a, a good uh, news for the board. It's good news uh, for our schools. It's good news for our parents and families that have their kids back in school. Uh, and our job is to try to keep them in school. So uh, we'll continue to work on this. We are anticipating an additional enrollment of somewhere around twenty to thirty students. To be honest, we've had several families that's had students in homeschool that they have not done what they need to do according to the law. Uh, we are pursuing legal challenges to those homeschool situations, and we expect those students to be back in class as well. You know, we have a duty and an obligation to our community to make sure that kids are in school. And sometimes that's just what we have to do, but we're gonna do it. We're gonna do the tough things that need to be done because our kids' futures depend on it. Do what?
Are those included in the twenty to thirty students we anticipate?
Yes, those are twenty to thirty students that's been in homeschool that they have not completed any homeschool requirements. Uh, and we're working very closely with the D, uh, court designated worker and DJJ and uh, Mr. Riley, our county attorney, to try to make sure that we get that uh, going. Um, I did attach uh.
For you, a CBE overview of seat funding. And it's just something for you all to look at. And this goes all the way back for the last, I think it starts um, with two thousand eight and through two thousand twenty-two. And it still shows, even though the legislature stepped up to the plate and provided a lot more funding this past school year, they're still a long way away from doing what they really need to do for public schools. And I've always said, I can tell you right now, I am not against private schools. I'm not against church schools. I'm not against charter schools, to be honest with you. As long as the legislature funds public education to the level they're supposed to, if they want to fund other schools, that's totally up to them. But I do believe their number one obligation is to fund public schools. And we took positive steps in that direction. We're being told there will be more positive steps taken, not this coming spring, but in the following spring, when it's the budget cycle again uh, in terms of transportation. But uh, just know, whenever you hear our legis, legislators say, we gave them all kinds of money, just know that that's not the full and complete truth. You know, it's not the full truth, the whole truth, and so help you God, not the truth, okay? Um, uh, it's not what it should be. And uh, listen, I appreciate what they did do. But they've got to take another huge step to fund public schools. And listen, the money's there. The money is there. Uh, we are collecting record tax revenues, and now's the time to make an investment in public education. Um, the, I did uh, put a couple of uh, notices from you from KDE, that's annual notices that we had to send to employees, and I wanted to supply them to you as well. You got your KSBA membership cards tonight, and you've got those there. And I need to know on I M F, if you all want to attend the KSBA regional meeting. It is in Hazard on September twelfth. And I guess what I'm asking you all to do, if you all want to go to that, of course, we can leave the board here. Uh, we can take a board vehicle and go. Uh, I just need to know so I can go ahead and register everybody. That's September twelfth. We don't have to go. You don't need the training hours. Everybody's up on training hours. But usually, most people try to attend that. If you can, you can. If you can't, you can't. Just let me know. If you would send me an email, no later than Monday.
Mr. Sailor, along with that same note uh, for the KSBA meeting in Hazard, I just have been um, elected to be the new regional chair. Um, and so, and so that will be announced that, that day. So I'll be the Upper Kentucky River Regional Chairperson for KSBA. And um, so I'll be going to Hazard.
Well, good deal. I, I uh, I was getting ready to tell them that, but I'm glad you went ahead and stepped up and told them. So uh, you know, that will be announced that day. Uh, you probably would need to leave here. I think it starts registrations about five-thirty. We'd need to leave about four, four fifteen, no later to get there. Well, if you can make it back, we'll leave here about four o'clock, something like that. I do plan on going. Uh, just from the standpoint that uh, usually superintents, we just try to go and support each other. So if we can get there, we'll leave about four. We can all go in one vehicle. It is one time. You can travel together, uh, just as long as you don't talk board business. So if you all will just let me know by Monday, I'll go ahead and register everybody. Okay. And uh, just send me an email. Carrie, if you don't care, maybe somebody contact Tammy, see if she wants to go. Uh, we'll all plan on going. It would, it would be just like a board meeting, so we would uh, make sure to go ahead and uh, count it just like a board meeting in terms of uh, payment for uh, uh, that evening. Yes. We can pick you up on the way through. We'll stop, we'll actually stop the vehicle, full stop, and let you get in.
In County.
And Mrs. That's it for uh, superintendent's report.
Okay. That brings us down to the board member forum. Do I have anything for many of my board members?
All I was gonna say, Donna, is that I didn't get to be with you all on the original opening night, but I did get a chance to run out there last night and uh, I just kind of wandered around the, wandered around the facility and uh, hung out there probably about an hour. So it was uh, it's just nothing short of amazing. Uh, they were putting the spray on the track at the time, whenever I was out there. And uh, I don't know, you just can't stand there long enough to look at it, to take it all in. It's just pretty incredible.
Yeah, we missed you and we missed um, Tammy and it was a great night. As I said the other night, it was a great night to be an engineer. And uh, you know, Mr. Sailor had the vision and, and I'm thankful that I could be a part of that. And um, Ginny Jo and, and Rhonda Hardy were able to be there with us. And we were all able to walk out on that football field and cut the ribbon. And I'm telling you, I was like you, there was some tears and uh, it was just a pride-filled moment, not only, you know, as a sense of accomplishment for us as a board, but for our community and above all, we did it for the kids. And I think that we can all hold our head up high and say, without any hesitation, that our kids have facilities that are as nice as anywhere in the Commonwealth. And uh, that's, you know, Mr. Sailor and his leadership and his vision and um, you know, it, it's been second to none. And you know, as we shared earlier, we've been able to do forty-seven million dollars worth of, worth of construction and still able to lower taxes. And that just didn't happen by chance.
Thank you all for the kind words.
Um, also, I just had a comment about opening day. Um, it was a great um, kickoff to the school year. Uh, I heard a lot of positive comments from um, from our staff and from our community partners. And uh, once again, that was a pride-filled day and I felt just really honored and humbled to be a part of it. And uh, I feel like it was a nice time had by all. Um, our food that was um, that was um, by um, Shane and his wife was awesome. Uh, the barbecue, it was, it was awesome. And just, you know, it, it was a good day. And then as far as one more comment about the flooding in Eastern Kentucky, I think our giving train is active. Um, I know they've been taking donations. And if anyone has it laid upon their heart to give, I know that every um, donation, ever how small or big, is greatly appreciated by our fellow Kentuckians. And I appreciate Mr. Sailor and Teresa Dawes and several people heading all of that up.
I know that the board will have a silent auction during the first week of September. There'll be several items uh, up for bid. Uh, we'll get that information out to you all. I can tell the public, if you want to give the giving train, one hundred percent of every dollar that you give will go to flood relief. It will go straight to the schools. It will go straight to the kids uh, in those impacted areas, especially Breathitt, Perry, Letcher, and Knott. Those, I believe, are the four major counties that are impacted. Uh, every, one hundred percent of everything that we uh, collect will go to them. I know that our middle school had an ice cream social today, and I think they raised seven hundred dollars uh, for the giving train today at the middle school. So there's several things going on. Our goal is, is to do these fundraisers through the month of uh, September. And our goal is then to present a check based on a percentage basis uh, to those school systems. And I left out Hazard Independent, of course, which uh, took a hit. Those are the five school districts that took huge hits. Uh, so we'll, we'll divide that money based on student enrollment percentage basis, and we'll send that to each of those uh, resource centers uh, there in those school districts.
And sorry, I didn't mean to have so many words to say, but I felt that was really important comments to make.
No, it's okay. Sheila, you got a comment?
Festivities, could we do something like that at the end of the year?
At the, on closing day? Uh, it's possible. We need to see, the only bad thing about closing days, usually everybody's headed for the mountains.
It isn't, I mean, something special, though, just to commemorate the closing of the.
Yeah, I mean, we, we possibly could. That's a good idea. And we can uh, look to see if we have some type of closing day activity. Uh, would be uh, good. And I can check into that.
I mean, something like giveaways, like we do for teacher appreciation, just something similar.
And so y'all know Mr. Wayne Young from KESA was here on Tuesday after opening day, and he spoke to all of our staff. He done a fantastic job uh, talking to our staff and just talking to them about uh, things like social media, uh, reminding our staff members of what their jobs are and what they're hired to do. And that uh, you know, it's whenever we start leaving that job description is when we start getting into a little bit of trouble. And we've seen that happen a couple of times in our school district. We want to try to avoid that. We don't want to create controversial issues. It takes away from all the positive stuff that's going on. And before you adjourn, Miss Esfert, I would like to say one thing to all of our parents so that they can hear this. Please be on the lookout. Watch for your children. Watch for any COVID-like symptoms. We have seen uh, some cases at uh, some of our.
Some of our schools. They're not by any means rampant or out of control. Uh, we do have one classroom that's been notified at Estill Springs. We've had six students test positive in that classroom. Uh, those parents have been notified and we're letting them know so they can keep a close eye on the symptoms. Um, I believe what we're gonna find out is as we move forward with COVID, COVID is gonna be uh, like the flu. It's a, a deadlier form of the flu for especially older individuals. So we need to keep a close eye on them. Uh, we're asking you, we're, we're not going after somebody on attendance when we have children with COVID and stuff like that. We want to err on the side of caution first. Uh, so please know that. We want your kids in school every day, that we can possibly have them there. But if they are sick, let's make sure. There's plenty of test kits out there. Uh, these mobile labs that uh, Miss Esfert was talking about. There's free test kits. Uh, the school district has free test kits. If your child gets sick at school and you come and pick them up, we're gonna give you your child and we're gonna hand you a COVID test kit if you want one, so that you can test your child to make sure that they're not uh, showing uh, positive COVID symptoms. So let's just uh, let's take care of each other here. Give us a few weeks. I think if we get these first few weeks under our belt, and we're doing better than a lot of other school districts. Like I said, we're at about ninety-one percent attendance uh, since the start of school, which is down, but by no means in the seventies like several school districts have been. So let's all keep working hard together to protect our kids and our staff members. And uh, I appreciate everybody. It's a privilege to be superintendent of Estill County School System.
Um, do we have any public comments, Mr. Simpson?
None.
None? Okay, with all of that, I need a motion to adjourn. Sheila makes a motion. Do I have a second? Brian makes a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We kick off, we kick off in ten minutes.
Just in time.
Just in time. Go home, get.
Thank you, board. You all are, you all are awesome. I appreciate you. Thank you all.
Appreciate you.